Welcome to the Board of Education meeting, which I will call to order momentarily. I'll go through our vision and our mission just to give us all a reminder of what we're doing and why we're here. So obviously, it's a repetitive thing for us, but the vision of our district is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And the mission that supports that is the School District of Milton in partnership with the community. Prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. Having said that, we'll call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, July 24th. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Damon, are you aware of anything we need to change on the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion, seconded by John Rather, is to approve our agenda. Questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. Minutes are included in board docs as usual.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on July 10th, 2023 as presented.
Second. That was Tracy's motion, seconded by Rick to approve the minutes of our previous meeting. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you. And the vouchers follow the minutes customarily?
I move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $1,659,281.39 as present.
Second.
John's motion, seconded by Rick, is to approve our vouchers in the amount that John enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? I see none. So all that would be in favor of approval of the vouchers, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? The vouchers are approved. As I whistled through and picked up the public comment sheet, there were no folks had signed up for that. So we will move past it. And next, of course, is Rich's chance to give us an update.
Yeah. The only thing I have in superintendent update is the red hot highlights, highlights some things that are happening in other schools across the district. This being the second board meeting of the month, our principals will come up and share some things that are happening. Even in the summer, we have some things going on. As they're coming up, though, the one thing that I wanted to highlight is that it's Rock County Player of the Week, and we have a number of students and staff members taking part, particularly if you are an FFA and ag program. So if you get a chance, encourage you to get to the Rock County Player.
Good evening. I guess we're going to go in height order tonight. But first, for Northside, a couple of updates.
Vote is not descending.
I think that's a little over the floor. So yeah, we'll see what happens. But a couple of updates for Northside. I want to highlight some community partnerships that happened this summer with YMC. This summer, we've had wraparound care for our summer school course as well as the summer camp afterwards. And it's really been well attended. Today at Northside, we had about 25 students participating in the program and they're exploring the option of wraparound care on next school year, something we haven't had for the last couple of years. So we're excited about that partnership. I also wanted to highlight our building's efforts. Our leadership team is building a three-year school profile. So the Wisconsin four results recently released to schools for review internally as we make plans for next school year. So that will include looking at three years worth of data, disabling it by different student groups, looking for trends, and then reviewing scholarship about what we can do to improve practice as a continuous improvement in our building. And the initial results were positive. It's some exciting work. We'll take into it more in August. And the last update for our elementary friends is they're hosting a core course in August, eighth, ninth, and 10th at Northside of a responsive classroom. This is our third year of that commitment. And we'll have 25 staff taking that class and looking to incorporate those strategies into their IT.
I got to move off a spot due to the height. All right, good evening. A couple of exciting things from the middle school. The first thing is the middle school is on the summer where the Promethean boards are replacing smart boards in many of our classrooms. And so that's been a pretty happy lift for our buildings and grounds crew and outside companies who are working on that. But an extra kudos to our custodial staff this summer because their typical cleaning pattern is thrown off and they're just rolling with it and figuring things out. So we are really grateful for that upgrade. As part of that is when we have guest teachers in our building, it could be any type of technology within a classroom to project to our students. And so this will create some consistency that we've been making work for the last couple of years knowing this was the summer for the middle school. We've had some trainings for our staff, which I'm excited to share about. So the middle school was awarded a Project Lead the Way grant. And so we will be offering a small entry point for Project Lead the Way to lead into some of our high school course offerings. So in seventh grade, it will be, alchemists will have exposure to design and modeling. And in eighth grade, it will be green architecture. And so the returning staff members are being trained this summer. And our newest tire will be trained at the beginning of this school year. So we're excited about incorporating those Project Lead the Way units within our science curriculum. And then just today, Mr. Yatra took five staff to the Abbot Summer Institute in Minneapolis. And I know there's high school teachers who are there as well. And that's a training that's always really exciting for our staff and really supports our school-wide Abbot work. And then just last thing for us is the transition for incoming seventh graders. This is the time of the year where the new seventh grade families are getting excited and a little anxious about what it looks like for their students to come to the middle school. So the beginning of August, we have our Making the Move for our kids three different days, short period of time, and kind of get some exposure. But then we're adding a parent guardian meeting this year, and then we're going to add kind of a coffee chat with the principals. Some new things to add into the transition piece heading into this school year. Thank you.
Hello. And in the 4K3 world, we don't have as much going on as our littles are done with summer school. But our custodial crews and buildings and grounds are giving our buildings cleaned. There's a lot of updating happening at West. So that's going to be fun to see when that is completed as well. We have new enrollments coming in daily that we're trying to keep up with to see how many new 4K3 students we're going to have. Registration for the bus as well as school is this week, and the bus registration is new that it's at the same time as registration. So we're hoping that that helps when school starts, that everyone's going to be on the appropriate bus and everything's going to be going smoothly for that. Continuing to hire new staff members. And just like John had mentioned, getting ready to have a new group of K3 educators trained in responsive classrooms as well.
Folks have driven past or tried to drive past and gotten lost. So I think that's not an easy task right now. But we're monitoring that and getting assurances that by the start of school year or by mid-August, a lot of that work will be completed and tracked. We'll be able to get through. And then I also wanted Marsha to mention registration, but I did want to put a plug. You know, today was the first day for registration. It goes on this week and next week. So we have online registration. People can go online and get that taken care of. We have staff available to help with any questions. Or folks can come in here at the district office if they need some assistance with registration too.
Very good. Any other questions for Rich? All right, thank you. And thank you all for your updates. And we'll move on to strategic planning. Jennifer can summarize our recent meeting.
Yeah, so the committee met. And in board docs, you'll find, again, laid out in six pages, the five pillars and the goals and measures. And then more importantly, really, the action steps that have happened in the 22, 23, and then, of course, the focus areas. So we had really good discussion at the committee level. Happy to answer questions that the other board members might have. None?
I guess we're good on that.
Just one thing that I would add is that, again, it's a reminder that we are doing a data workshop on August 7th. And then following that data workshop, and once we get the state district report card information, because that's probably the goal for our first pillar in teaching and learning, we can reconvene in the strategic planning committee and look at goals and any changes to goals and focus areas and how we did in meeting those goals for the year.
Very good. Anyone else on the strategic planning process? All right, thank you, Jennifer. Next up is another summary from the committee work that the HR folks have done. That would be Rick.
Okay, thanks. So the HR committee met on July 12th. First item on the agenda is the review of the draft employee handbook. HR committee has received a draft copy of the employee handbook that the HR department in our vendor, USI, have been working on since last year. The draft handbook represents the combination of teaching staff, support staff, and administrative staff through one universal handbook. In addition, there have been several changes in the federal and state laws. And the district has implemented a Board of Education policies and changes in district practices and procedures. Next steps, the administration will be meeting with the MEA leadership. And the board will review the handbook and possibly approve the handbook at the next board meeting on August 14. I would ask that each board member read over the handbook and contact Chris and/or Rich with any questions that you may have about it. You will see included with the handbook in board docs, a list of the notable changes that have been made. This is not an action item. This is just information only. Did anyone have any questions about that? Or Chris, did you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
I just have one question. So thank you for sending me the, because for me, it's a comparison. The draft changes, is that when there's a section with no bullet beneath it, is that just a brand-new section?
No, that's actually just more of an explanation of what each of those are. So if you're looking at that draft employee handbook changes document, if you look at the grievance procedure, so 115, you'll see, please refer to board policies 3340 and 4340 for reporting workplace grievances. That is just additional information expanding upon each of those different sections.
So the one right above, 109, is that just a new section or?
Yes.
Okay, that's the ones that don't have anything, any bullets are just brand-new sections?
They're brand-new sections, but that's just, let's say, something new that we did not include in the support staff handbook or the teacher handbook from 2013 to 2012.
Okay, so no. That was the last one, that's the only question I had. Thank you for your answers.
Of course.
Any other questions on that topic? Yeah, the next item is discussion of possible action on the athletics activities in advisor staff and baseline. Included in board docs, you will find a memo with the staffing needs for the upcoming year. This number is being brought for approval after the high school, middle school, and Northside staffs have reviewed the needs for these positions. Also included in board docs is the list of positions and assignments for those positions. Did anyone have any questions regarding that? I will make a motion to approve that 218 support staff athletics activities and advisor positions be the staffing baseline used for the 2023-24 year.
Okay.
Thank you. Rick's motion was seconded by Jennifer, as you just heard there, to approve our support staff and athletic and advisory position based staffing baseline. Anyone with questions?
One question. Are we cutting any positions from choir? Are we making a significant decrease, increase, flat?
We have reduced some positions across the district. Most of our athletic activity and advisor positions at the high school and middle school, there are some in the high school and middle school. And we made some reductions through our budget reduction process. The overall number ended up being almost the same as last year because we moved some hourly paid positions into a stipend position. You'll see in the list covered. If you want to pull up the board with an appendix one document, you can go up to the next page. You'll see in, for Northside, there's what's called an opportunity hour intervention and reading half. Those are new stipended positions. In previous year, they were, we paid those at a hourly rate because they are consistent and ongoing now. It's more appropriate to pay for those with stipend. So that adds to the total, even though it's a position we've had in the past where we're paying for it differently.
Does the district say things that this is not going to have any negative impact on any of the offerings to our students? I think you're saying?
The description that I, the average unit hour or just overall?
Just overall.
The reductions that we identified for this coming year because of our need to reduce budget were identified by our principals and athletic and activities directors based on the number of students that are in activities. And in some of them, they were things that were in our budget but we didn't offer because we didn't have students take part. And in others, it's a reduction of the monthly. Instead of having two positions for activity, it's down to one position because there's not as many students that take part. So anytime we reduce positions like that, there's some impact that is identified as positions that we could reduce to balance our budget for the coming year.
With the most minimal of impact, obviously. With the most minimal impact to the student?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Motion on the floor then is to approve 218 as our staffing baseline for all of those positions. Any other questions? All in favor of that motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you. That clearly passes.
Okay, our last agenda item is the discussion of possible action on a one-year grant funded 1.0 FTE SCL coordinator support staff at the elementary level. The attached memo from Chris and Julia, you will find the recommendation from them on how this position will be utilized in the district to help improve the social, emotional learning and mental health of our K6 students. This position will work to make sure that those students who have been identified as having SCL needs will make progress towards improvement in this area and in their academic needs as well. The memo also speaks as to how this position will be paid more with the Get Kids Ahead Grant. Julia and Chris are here to answer any other questions that anyone may have on this topic or if there's anything else that either people like ahead.
I think because it's a new position, even though it's grant-funded and it's a one-year position, I think that we're pretty solid. You and Julia have just given a brief description behind what Rick has shared.
Sure. Well, like Rick said, so we have our universal social-emotional services in place. So we have our social-emotional second step curriculum. We now have our SCL screener. And that is starting to build our system. So we're looking to take next steps within that system. So once we identify students who have needs, we need to provide some sort of support or interventions for them, just like we do for academics. So this is our next step into helping build that system. So what this coordinator position will do is at the case like the sixth level, because we want to start small and make sure that we're consistent across our schools. They would be analyzing the data with teams. They would be providing recommendations for intervention. They would be helping classroom teachers take next steps with support within the classroom. Again, just kind of an additional step past universal. They'll also be working with the student services group who kind of target those conversations and support those students with their skill building. And then working directly with me to make sure that we're all on the same page across all 3K grades and at Northside. Again, it's a grant-funded position. We got this money from the state one year. Then they added a second year. So we have a good chunk of money to spend on supporting mental health. And that doesn't have to be direct mental health services. Part of building a mental health system is to increase skills and to provide training and to do some outreach within the community around mental health. So it is more than just providing like a school-based mental health service.
I was going to say, it says 1.0 FTE. Do we anticipate this is a single person or could we have a couple of folks with different areas of expertise do a halftime or something like that?
I did not think of having a halftime. I was thinking one person just for consistency purposes. To have the same conversation that all of the schools within their student services team.
What happens next year?
Yeah, so we do not have the grant funding beyond December 2024. So depending on what our overall budget looks like and where we are as a district, we'll know if we can take next steps to kind of sustain something like this. This is a very common position within districts of our size. They can be called a social-emotional coordinator. They can be called a behavior interventionist. They can be called all sorts of things. And who provides that service can look very different. It can be a school counselor. It can be a school site. It can be a social worker. It could be a special ed teacher who maybe has some strong interest in behavior. It's a wide variety across the districts that do have a position like this. But this is kind of our stuff wanting to, having the funds available until they're not, to take next steps to build our system. Because that's what we need to do.
So is the intention of the position more to maybe not be the person that interacts with students versus trying to build a team in the event that the funding is not there to take that into the future?
Right. And it will be okay to work with students to build social-emotional skills, like having reset skill groups or some sort of a second set of eyes when a student is struggling in a certain behavioral situation. That this role could definitely do that and support that work because even though I feel like we're stacked well in the student services area, a second set of eyes or support on any given week would be much appreciated. So I know that there will be some direct contact with students, but mostly to support the system as a whole.
True. Other question?
Just clarity on the grant. Congratulations, it's awesome.
Thanks.
You said that there's no money with passengers a one-year. Or is it, are we able to hold them next year? Is the money all gone?
I don't, the state has not made a decision on what, if they're going to provide any sort of initiative beyond 2023, December 24 that I've heard of yet. I know that there was a big push for a large amount of money for mental health services that got totally slashed. So it would be a fun surprise if that happened.
I would trust we would probably sign up for it again.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It was nice to be told that there was going to be more funding for a second round for all the districts that did get approved for it. So that's great. Yeah.
Any other questions for Julia?
One more. Is there, do they set targets on the type of certifications that the staff member has to best be able to be hired?
We put it under like the support staff bucket. If we were to be able to sustain a position like this in the future, likely would be under that student services bucket. So there are certain qualifications in the job description that I wrote up and with Chris's support. And then we did do some certification similar to like our special ed or professionals or support aid.
But the state doesn't dictate to you what needs to go with that?
They do not.
That they need to know that that's the job structure that you're setting?
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of a one-year only grant funded 1.0 FTE K6 social-emotional learning grant coordinator starting with the 2023-24 school year.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to add a 1.0 FTE, as Rick just said there with a, that's a long job title, social-emotional learning grant coordinator. Any questions on that? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much. Very good, thanks, Rick. All right, and that'll also bring us down to another committee update. And this is a finance meeting that we had recently. And John will summarize some of that activity.
Thank you, Joe. The finance committee met on July 13th. It was attended by board members Joe, Dave, and myself. Rich was also there along with Carrie and Ross. This was Carrie's last meeting and the first finance meeting for Ross. It seemed apparent to me that Carrie and Ross had really spent some time together going over the budget, and Carrie left Ross in a great place. I would like to thank them both for a smooth transition. There was one agenda item we discussed that was changes to the 22, 23 adopted budget. I know Ross will go over the items in more detail, but to summarize, the biggest adjustments came as a result of federal grant carryover and the usage of ESSER funds. A part of these funds were used for operational expenses. This does include the boiler and transportation. As we near the end of our fiscal year, it is a state statute, the board approves all changes. This is a brief summary, and I'll pass it over to Ross.
Thank you, guys. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As mentioned, we met pretty recently on the finance committee to discuss the budget and the process for the school development. And according to the schedule, I'll suggest the changes during the budget development process for 23, 24, a number of decisions were made in regards to our ESSER grants, which are expiring after next year. And one of the major things we did before the end of 2023 was we switched our planned Apple lease payment from our local funds to ESSER funds available to us through the year. That freed up a significant portion of funds, which is depicted on the schedule attached. By the difference now, revenues are showing in excess expenditures, showing that there is no planned excess of revenues for a one-year basis for the budget for 22, 23. Other things that were already mentioned is we did have costs associated to capital maintenance that we accelerated during this year for the project at the middle school. Of course, the Apple lease payment, which was just mentioned. Some other unanticipated changes during this year, which happens fairly often, is Medicaid revenues in a given year were increased this year on a one-time basis. A very common thing that the state does in regards to Medicaid claims is we date it, it was called a test review. And after a number of years, if you take your claim from several years ago, look at it again, determine if any appropriations left at the state level, and then redistribute that back to districts on a one-year basis based on appropriations. So we did see some of that this year. We also saw a marked increase in some of our interest investments throughout the year. So our font temp revenues for interest investment were also increased in the schedules. Aside from that, we do have our transfer to Fund 46, which is used every year to the children, our future capital maintenance project. But I understand this district initiated that process several years ago, and will have access to those funds for capital projects beginning in 2024. Aside from that, the schedule on here is forwarded for the review of the finance committee and the attached schedule or paper, which I'll be discussing with them after tonight. I'll be going to paper in the next 10 days.
You want to add questions for Ross, or John, or myself? He was obviously absent, so. I'll fill in the gaps if there are any.
Ross, you mentioned the transfer to Fund 46. Is that on, is it in the document?
It is. So on the document, the summary document is on the screen right now, but the document review, the finance committee, it shows two digits of function. The transfer to other funds, which is the last line of the schedule, for the operating transfers to other funds was increased by 1.15.
Got it.
Any other questions from folks? This is an action item for us, if you'd be, or if you're of a mind to.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 23 budget changes presented.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve the changes to our 22, 23 budget, as we just went over. Questions on any of those? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much. And thank you, John. Is that the end of your, that's all the guests? Summary, thank you very much. All right. Miscellaneous, a couple of cursory items here. Action on stacking reports is first.
I'll make a motion to approve the stacking report.
Okay.
Rick's motion, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the stacking report. And as, just to make a note, that was an updated report. We had a last-minute addition, so there are actually two versions there. So we are approving the updated one for clarity. Questions on it? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Gifts and donations.
I would prefer the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second. Thank you. Tracy's motion, seconded by John, to approve our gifts and donations with gratitude of the district. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That also clearly passes. We are up to meeting dates.
We have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday, August 14th. Because July has five Mondays, that's three weeks of tonight. So Monday, August 14th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting. We have a policy committee meeting on Wednesday, August 2nd at 6:30 PM. That would be in the first floor conference room. We have a data workshop on Monday, August 7th at 6:30 PM. That will be here in the PDC. And then we're looking to schedule an HR committee meeting and speaking with Rick. Rick has the day off on Monday, July 31st. So I'm wondering if John or Jen have availability. I prefer it not to be in the morning because I think we're going to need the morning that day to finalize getting things ready for that meeting. But if there's any time afternoon. And Rick, you said you were, you had time?
I'm available all day.
I could be free between noon and?
Noon at what time?
Three.
That would work for me, too.
Say noon?
Can we do revenue later in the end of that schedule rather than the start? Or the middle, either one or two?
Well, it's going to be an hour, you think?
I think about an hour, yes.
Two o'clock then? Two, okay.
That was it for upcoming meetings.
All right. And then we also have scheduled tonight an executive session. And I will entertain, am I verbiage correct here? Legal ease in some regards. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 and E and 19.82 sub 1, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Subject matter is discussion and possible action on final offer to MBEA for 23, 24 collective bargaining agreements.
So move.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion, seconded by John. And I will mention before we vote it that we are also able to take action on this subsequent to coming back to open, if it's appropriate. So we have that option. All right, with that motion on the floor, I'll go from left to right. All who's in favor of going to executive session, please say yes. John, I looked the wrong way.
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yeah.
Joe is yes. Rick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All in favor, we are all in favor and that is asked. So we are in executive session, thank you. I stumbled through that one here.